Okay.
Did you get that off TV?
Will.
On that note, we'll turn the TV on.
We'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of Oh, Canada.
(singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all our hearts come in. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. On fire and white, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee, God keeper and glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Record of attendance, Lynda, you're good. Declaration of Conflict of Interest, anyone? Approval of agenda, additions or deletions? I have 11A at property issue as an addition. Go ahead, deputy. Oh, wait a second, somebody's letting...
You got to watch your call, you gotta get Jeff to press above.
I just can't even believe it.
Well, you're good.
Doesn't matter. Only going on six years.
So it's been ten years between the two of them.
Can't, still can't work. Go ahead, deputy.
Thank you, your worship. Don Mills, go forward. Plan.
Okay, 11B. Anything else, anyone? Okay. Sorry, go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, I'd like to have you consider a lease offer this evening.
That's separate from that property issue? Okay. 11C, lease offer. Good. Okay, looking for a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes, Town Council, February 8th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Questions, your worship.
We okay tonight, folks?
Yeah, we're good.
Yes, ma'am. I've never heard, I haven't heard that in a long time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, February 22nd.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded by the left-hand side of the table. All those in favor?
Question.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, February 17th.
So moved.
Moved, seconded by the first person that can put their hand up. There you go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so something special we get to do tonight. We have our very famous Josh Cochrane in the house. And so we're gonna make a presentation on behalf of the town to Josh. I don't, yeah, you can do, somebody can do that. And then where do you want to, okay? Come on up, Josh. Okay, so I think everybody knows Josh, first of all, because he does so many things in the community to raise money for different organizations and different people in need, and we really appreciate you, you know that, right? We've been buds for a long time, anyway, right? So this is what this says, "It's presented to Josh Cochrane in recognition of being awarded the Nova Scotia Human Rights Youth Award, December 8th, 2017. Your devotion to helping foster an inclusive environment for persons with disabilities is commendable. We are all proud of your accomplishments." So this is for you. Keep that for, and we really are proud of you. Do you want to say anything? Yes, you can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I offered him the microphone and he just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, Josh, for everything you do. We all appreciate you. And mom, thank you for, because it takes a strong mom to make sure he gets everywhere. So thank you for everything. Have a good night, dear.
Great, oh, Josh.
Oh, hang on, Tina wants a, Tina wants a picture.
Say it.
Thanks, Chief. Waste Check re-single-use plastic bags. Have you got that?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
So Waste Check recently, at one of their meetings, and maybe a board member would like to speak to this, but they discussed the single-use plastic bags and have written to the municipal partners, offering to come to a future meeting if council was concerned or wanted more information about how to deal with the issue, or if council was considering taking a position that they should be banned from use in Nova Scotia, that they did have a draft motion that you could consider. So it's just generally reaching out to each of the councils, offering a level of support for you if you wanted to discuss or gather more information on the issue.
Counselor Hood?
Your worship, this was a matter that was discussed at our last Waste Check meeting, and basically what's happening is, the province has indicated to regional chairs that if they can, if the province can see support from the municipal units to proceed with the ban, they would do it. And we don't want a patchwork quilt, and it's common. I was in Quebec last spring for a week, and they do it there, at least in Montreal they do. But, so the deal is, we want to be in on it early on, and because it's going to be here inevitably, why should we not give support to an initiative that would require the province to do the ban instead of individual municipal units and end up with a patchwork quilt result? So the memo here requires us to make a decision so that the chair can take it up with the regional chairs before March 9th. So I'll make a motion that the town indicate that it would support a province-wide waste ban implemented by the province under the Environment Act.
Okay, moved and seconded. Deputy?
Counselor Hood, you all done? You're good to go? And maybe even, I'm in support of the motion, I sit on Waste Check along with Counselor Hood, and I think it still might be advantageous for us to get Amy to come in, maybe go over the presentation that was done by Kings County. They did a little presentation, I think, just to see it, but just for information purposes. And I think along the discussions, too, is they have something called EPR Extended Producer Responsibility, so there could be some money coming in that way, too, on how you get rid of packages, like what you buy your ice cream containers in, there's an added cost in there. So there could be some money coming back to municipalities that way. But I think Halifax, Counselor Hood, I think is in favor of it. So, you know, when you get the largest municipality or the largest region in the province in favor of it, you know pretty well what's gonna happen, but we should be on the front end instead of the back end, and I agree with the motion.
Good, thank you. Counselor McLeod?
So I usually attend the meetings as observer, I go there mostly to keep Phil and Cliff in line, but...
Good thing.
But I was gonna go attend the last meeting and bring along this green bag and explain how it can replace the plastic that's available.
Exactly, and those things, there's some indication that a lot of the so-called bag we buy and sell and all that are more problematic or dispositionally. Paper is the answer.
This is a different one.
Well, that's probably to buy it.
Oh, yeah.
He's exactly right with wallet, too.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. I like that one.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilor.
So I had a follow-up. So when we had that discussion, there were some indication, it's a political issue, and the province would probably be reluctant unless it sees broad-based support. And I suggested that they, I went through the Don Mills thing, and the Don Mills thing is there's nine regional areas in the province representing 95 percent of the population, and if we could ensure that the urban cores of those regional areas were to support this, urban, like in our case...
Over 5,000.
We wouldn't be overruled, maybe, by municipal governments who, like our local municipal government, who are dithering over this because one of their councillors runs a store or something and doesn't want to have plastic bags. That's all I have to say.
Okay. I've still got two lights on. Are we good? Okay.
Maybe. I don't know if I missed it at the meeting, Counselor Hood, but did they, if they said this ban comes into effect, what, did they give, they didn't give a timeline, did they?
No, they didn't.
No.
And frankly, definitely may come up, but I think something will...
But the minister's interested, right? But, and I understand, like most things, if you don't have the support of, you know, of your municipal governments...
They have individual responsibility, really, they certainly have the Environment Act and all regulations and all that, and they're good to do their responsible things. They said there's up to 500 million bags under that category that are used in Nova Scotia every year.
Don't doubt it for a second. So it's about the right thing. You know, there will be some small businesses that will be a little bit upset, but...
They have to make a judgment.
Exactly. What was it Don Mills said last night? Nova Scotia is all for progress as long as nothing changes?
Yeah.
Okay, so call for the question.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. You. Pride banner request, sidewalks, crosswalks. Counselor Dennis?
I was notified, I was asked, contacted by someone wanting to have the town paint a couple of crosswalks on Main Street for the upcoming Pride Parade, and I knew that this was brought up a couple of years ago, and I couldn't remember exactly why we weren't allowed to do it, but I know that we made a motion that we would put one, I think it was in front of the Tourist Bureau at the time. So I just thought I would put it on the agenda and thought maybe council would like to discuss it and see if there's someplace else that we could actually put one.
Yep. Okay, so it's open for discussion.
I wouldn't have been here the last time to discuss it, but I guess it doesn't comply with the regulations under the motor vehicle act.
No, well, we can't do crosswalks.
We can't do crosswalks.
We can't do crosswalks, it doesn't comply, you're correct.
So what is the proposal? To make like a crosswalk somewhere?
Well, I think, I'm sorry, Wade, I didn't even see your...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and it's nighttime, so I should be able to see the light. So the last time, I think we had mentioned putting something on the sidewalk in front of the Tourist Bureau or something, you know, some other place like that, but we can't do that right now.
It was August 11th, 2016, meeting of council, that a pride-themed colored mural be painted on sidewalk in front of the Visitors Information Center.
Yeah.
But then we redone that road and everything, so it never got done.
Okay.
Well, that's what we were thinking, well, I was thinking, and I talked to Jeff, but it's up to council, so.
Okay, so Wade, or Counselor?
Well, for me, Frost Park's okay, it's not a bad spot, but, yeah, the walkway would be all right. I'd like to see it, actually, to be honest with you, on Alma Square. I think that would be an excellent spot for it, across, you know, just that section of crosswalk, it's a, it's a pedway. I think that would be probably a better spot.
Yeah, they already have it painted, a carpet painted there.
Yeah, but we could fix that.
Why wouldn't you go back to a people ask about those two sites and see what they think?
I didn't hear you. You have your microphone on.
Well, to come up with a couple of suggestions, why don't we go back, have Sandy go back to the people she's been in contact with and see if they'd be, if they would think that those sites that we're thinking about are accept, one of them's acceptable or both, before we do something without...
Well, we need to know that we're, the places that we're thinking are acceptable.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, are they acceptable to the community, you know, to the art gallery, to, you know?
Right.
So we have to, and, and from the engineer, are we okay?
So maybe that's something the staff would have to look into?
Well, we're talking sidewalk, not crosswalk.
We're talking, we're talking sidewalk, yeah.
We're talking about one of the pathways.
So, so, they painted Granville Street in Halifax.
And Truro, and Woolfield.
It wasn't a pride thing, I don't think, but, I mean, they painted it all up and made it real neat and so on, and I don't know how it's lasted a while. So I assume that you can put paint down and have it last a while, you know?
Actually, they're actually doing more crosswalks in Halifax, it was just in the paper, and they did it in Woolfield, too, about Woolfield. The problem was when they did it, they didn't put the white lines on the side to show it as a crosswalk, so then they had to put the white lines beside.
Gotcha. Okay. CAO?
Yep, so, the issue with putting paint on the street, that's not so much the issue. I mean, people paint things, start lines, finish lines, whatever, on streets all the time. The issue is, if, from the Traffic Authority perspective, is if you take a crosswalk that's known locally as a crosswalk, and you paint it with the, a variety of colors, whether it's for this purpose or any other, and you distort, perhaps, to a driver who is not from the area, and this doesn't look like a crosswalk anymore, or let's just say it looks enough like a crosswalk for anyone paying attention, but somebody doesn't pay attention, somebody runs over a pedestrian, and you find yourself in court justifying why your crosswalk doesn't actually look like a crosswalk, and to what degree did that contribute to the accident? And unfortunately, that's, that's where the standards come. And when the engineer presents that perspective, that's his, that's his concern. So if you want to paint something on the street...
I didn't want to do a street budget.
Or, or off the street, for that matter. You know, I think we're pretty good at rectangles, but if you want to get artistic about it, we're probably not the, not the people you want to hire to do the painting, but if council is okay with some kind of a mural, some sort of artwork to reflect the support or the acknowledgement, however you want to see it, of that community and their event on the street, on a sidewalk, on a walkway, whatever it is, you know, there's no issue, as long as, the caution, I guess, from Traffic Authority is, don't distort a crosswalk which is meant to protect pedestrian safety for the purpose that it might compromise that, or you might be found to have compromised that.
So don't put your light up. So, so if the, if a group wants to do something like that, then could they do up by drawing, you know, a reasonable proximity of what they want to bring forward, and then council okays it? And they have someone do it? Or are we doing it and paying for it?
Well, that was, that was a question I was going to ask, too, is...
That makes sense.
I was just asked this, so...
That makes sense.
All they're doing in most places is just stripes. Some are going straight down the walkway, some are going across, so...
We can do stripes.
I like the stripes going down, actually, it's like a walkway, then.
Okay, so what's the next step?
And then it has to be the proper paint, too, so that it doesn't peel off.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so, so it suggests if perhaps Counselor Dennis, as Counselor Hood has suggested, Counselor Dennis wants to go back and speak to the, to the interested party, maybe talk about ideas that we've discussed here. If council wants to have a look at it before you give final endorsement, then just bring it back to a committee of the whole.
Yeah, so definitely I want, I'd like to see what it, what's being put forward, but the other piece is, so, because I can't recall, remember when they painted the red carpet on Alma Square?
Yes.
Who paid for that?
I don't know, I just stopped by and helped out, but I don't know who paid for it.
It's at the art gallery.
Okay. All right.
So I can ask the art gallery, too, if they're interested in maybe doing it, and Frost Park, well, I don't know who would do that.
Same, same group, artists. Joey?
Well, maybe we could...
Hang on one second, who's gonna talk first?
There's no sidewalk between Kirk Street and Cliff Street, there's no sidewalk across the street, but it's outside, it's extended crosswalk. There's no crossing down Cliff Street.
What's he saying? We can't do sidewalk, we can't do crosswalks.
No, there's no crosswalk there, and there's a crosswalk down there.
There's a crosswalk between Cliff and Kirk, not Cliff and Kirk.
Oh.
We'll maybe we'll check, ask the traffic authority to look at it.
Yeah, we'll ask the traffic authority to look at that, Joey.
Thank you.
Okay, dear. Thank you, Joey. Okay, Cliff, were you gonna say something?
I think, I think we need to get whoever it is, Sandy, to, instead of putting the load on your back to come up with the idea and us to come up with an answer, I think that they need to flesh something out, make a proposal to us like Mayor suggests, and you can carry forward to us. I think that would be a lot better than what we're...
Or would it be good if they just came and presented to us at committee of the whole?
Well, it wouldn't be very difficult to come up with a little, a one-page drawing, this is what we want.
And then we could, I mean, our staff can advise what kind, type of paint.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess the question, part of the question is...
So the who, the what, and where, who's paying for it?
Yeah, yeah, so, we didn't, we didn't pay for the red carpet, I know that, but whatever. Okay, so are you, are you okay with that?
Yep, perfect.
The how, the what, the where, and who pays for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, good.
How, what, where, when.
Good stuff, okay. Council Advisory Committees, Committee of the Whole, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. I move that the proposed waterfront action plan be adopted as prepared by WSP Consultants.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that, I move that in response to the petition presented to council, the current level of service provided by the transit bus be maintained and that a route alteration not be made. And maybe I could get the, if I have a second or get the CAO just to go over the conversation we had with one of the organizations in town.
Second. Second by Wade. Did you second that? I can't.
Sorry.
I'm just laughing, who seconded it?
Austin.
Okay, yeah. Moved and seconded. Okay, go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, a couple of weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, we had the opportunity, yourself, myself, Deputy Mayor, to meet with representatives of the Hope Center to talk about the Dial-A-Ride service, to understand what their capabilities and capacity is in terms of providing door-to-door service to residents who might not be immediately on the bus route, but may, may need an accessible supportive service. And what we found out is that they, they aren't without their challenges, but they do have some additional capacity at this time. They do have contracts with the Tri-County School Board and the CSAP for some children to take to school and back from school, but they do have time during the day when, when they have drivers and vehicles, and they would be able to respond to calls for the type of service that they provide. So that, that is a good supplemental service to the scheduled fixed route bus service that, that we provide, and, you know, our service is, is growing in popularity, and that's a good thing, but it doesn't serve all people's needs in all circumstances, and so that's why it's important that we still have taxi services and Hope Dial-A-Ride and other supports in the community.
Good.
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary?
May. Your worship, I move that the request for a decision, re-tell your story, Yarmouth South be deferred to the next committee of the whole meeting.
So moved. Yes, sir.
Your worship, I would, I would request that we defer that until at least the April Committee of the Whole. Our planner won't be present at the, at the March Committee of the Whole, so that's her item, I think we owe it to her to be present.
Okay, so, April or later?
Yep, April or later.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that the request for a decision, Recommunications Officer be referred to Budget. You guys, you guys alive on the other side of the table?
I know. We need some help here. Moved and seconded.
Question?
Um, question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. When are we doing, are we doing budgets on Thursdays?
Yes, so...
Don't need to stick this in here, but we need to get this on the go.
Yeah, so the next, the first time we're gonna deal with the operating budget, council respond, several members of council responded to an offer to have directors and managers present their, their budget requests, as well as sort of an update on their, on their activities. And so we're scheduling those for the Committee of the Whole meeting on the 28th, and so following that, we'll get into the numbers, but I think it's fair and probably good for you in terms of giving you full, full information directly from them, that you hear their presentations, receive their information. Jerry and I have had that information for a couple of weeks now and have started working the numbers. I don't want to be a spoiler, but I can tell you that there's, there's a bit of work to be done if we're to accommodate everybody's, everybody's requests, and so you'll hear the requests, and then we'll get into the numbers, and we, we hope to meet on Thursdays until we get the, until we get the budget ready to pass.
Good.
Good.
Thank you. Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that the request from the First Field Artillery Regiment and the 84th Independent Field Battery to conduct a Freedom of the City for Yarmouth on September the 29th, 2018 be accepted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that due to the dates for the Union and Nova Scotia Municipality Spring Conference, the date of the May Town Council meeting be made the 17th, 2018, and that meeting will be held in Yarmouth, your worship.
Okay.
Second.
Question?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Give me a moment.
Oh, sorry.
When's the long weekend? Oh, so...
I don't know, I don't usually...
Yep, so, May 17th? Yeah, okay, good.
Good. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary?
Your worship, I move that staff review the increase in assessed value of the facade properties to determine the effect on our tax revenue.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that a subject matter expert from the Department of Natural Resources be invited to meet with council at a future date to discuss the status of deer population in southwest Nova Scotia and measures to minimize human and deer interaction.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that the town of Yarmouth undertake two solar panel projects with a cost of approximately $375,000 to be funded from reserves, with future revenues from the sale of electricity being used to repay the reserve.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that the request for $1,000 from the Association, from the Association of Municipal Administrators for the Spring Conference 2018 be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that the town of Yarmouth accept the proposal submitted by the firm Guinness Cooper of Halifax, Nova Scotia, for the Air... the firm Guinness Cooper of Halifax, Nova Scotia, for the Arts and Culture Centre Board Governance Framework Design in the amount of $23,700 plus HST.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your Worship, I move that staff be requested to prepare a public awareness campaign in order to educate the public on the new waterfront action plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your Worship, I move that the request for $15,000 to assist with the purchase of additional seating in support for concert promotion be accepted contingent on other municipal units contributing equally to the project.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion?
That's for Mariner Center.
That's for Mariner Center.
That's the seating.
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your Worship, I move that the request for $140,000 to continue the facade program into 2018 be referred to Budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, Deputy. Citizen Advisory Committees, Planning Advisory, Counselor McLeod.
From the public hearing of earlier this evening, there are six motions, first being, I move to amend the land use bylaw to approve the addition of Section 5.59, criteria for site plan approvals to Part V, general provisions for all zones as outlined in Caroline's report.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move to amend the land use bylaw definition of community center to permit the private sector to provide an arts and community center facility in addition to government and nonprofit organizations as outlined in our planner's report.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, go ahead.
Uh, Your Worship, and to Counselor McLeod, we had somebody make a...
Presentation?
Presentation earlier in the evening at the public hearing, was any of their discussions or any of their ideas talked about at the Planning Advisory Committee?
I don't know if this makes it easier for non, for profit organizations, or for-profit organizations to proceed and do the same as nonprofit. So, I think that staff and the planning department would look at each application and, and be aware of Stephanie's presentation.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move to amend the land use bylaw definition of seasonal retail trade to include recreational activities as outlined in our planner's report.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move to amend the land use bylaw to permit commercial flag signs in all zones, with the exception of those listed in the downtown commercial and the residential sign provision tables as outlined in our planner's report.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move to amend the land use bylaw so that 500 square feet be changed to 1,000 square feet, and that manufacturing be added to the stated uses in the commercial industrial and waterfront commercial industrial zone parking requirements in order to mirror the existing general provisions in all industrial zones policy as outlined in our planner's report.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
So, Jim, Counselor, how much, so, that's, that's area for parking space, is it?
Yeah.
So, for instance, what do we require out in the shopping, out in shopping malls, do you know?
There's no require...
How many square? There's no minimum required?
There, there used to be.
There used to, but...
Changed it.
There isn't anymore.
Oh.
Oh, do you want...
So, where does this, where, where would be a typical place where this one would apply?
Go ahead, now.
So, so, the intention of this amendment was to make those two zones, the, get this right, the CI four and the WCI five, consistent with other zones in the town that allow industrial uses. And so, as the, as the bylaw was currently written, those two zones actually required double the parking of all other industrial zones, and they didn't explicitly permit manufacturing. So, what this amendment does is it brings the parking of those two industrial zones consistent with other industrial zones, and allows them very clearly to have manufacturing within, within those zones.
So, 1,000 square feet, I...
So, that's for every, one parking space for every 1,000 square feet of industrial space.
Okay. I was just trying to get my head around it.
I had a trouble getting my head around it a little bit, but it's, it's just trying to make it, take away the responsibility of enforcing parking. It makes it easier.
So, so, do they have to, so, if you have a lot that's 20,000 square feet, can it have 20 parking spaces?
So, the way the, the formula is used, it depends on the size of the building you build. So, if you build a 20,000-square-foot industrial building...
Oh, so, it's not the lot size that's right?
It's the building.
It's the building size.
Yeah. And, and then it is a minimum requirement that you would have 20 parking spaces on your lot for the 20,000-square-foot industrial building that you, that you put up. That's a minimum number. You could have more than that. Typically, an industrial use might be, you know, might include, you know, equipment and space for moving about and carrying out the industrial work.
This thing isn't retroactive, is it?
No, it is not. And it's actually reducing the requirement, so it, right now, as it's written, it's one space for every 500 square feet, so we're reducing it to one to every 1,000.
So, what happens when it's a multi-story building?
Uh, still count the square footage, it's not the footprint.
It's the footprint of the building on the lot?
No, it's...
It's the square footage?
It's the square footage.
Good.
What I wanna say is just remember, this is industrial we're talking to, we're not talking about commercial areas in which there's, you know, a ton of, of people coming to shop or something like that. This is, these are industrial uses that we're talking about here. So, we're not necessarily talking about huge requirements necessarily.
I hope it doesn't shut somebody up.
Well, if it hasn't shut them out already, it's, it's just making it even easier.
Do we know it hasn't shut somebody up? Uh, uh, that's all the questions.
No, that, it's a great, it's a great point, you know, that, that we, we don't want to be overly restrictive, and, and that was the thinking behind, excuse me, removing many of the other parking requirements in our land use bylaws. We were, we'd be prescriptive.
It's making it less restrictive now.
It's less restrictive.
That's all the questions I have.
Good. Okay, any more discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
The last motion, I move to amend the land use bylaw to change the use of the word "secondary" in order to provide clarity to the intent of Policy 19.3 as outlined in Caroline's report.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Good, thank you. Okay, we have reports, Communities in Bloom, solid waste, no report from me. Questions for committee chairs, anyone? Deputy?
Uh, one to Counselor Cleveland and Counselor Dennis, maybe just, how did the Ken-Langial Symposium go on a couple Saturdays ago? How did it work out at Town Hall? I heard it was a resounding success.
It was, Deputy Mayor, it was fantastic, more people than we'd ever had at one of these symposiums before, I'm told. I've never been at one before, so, I'm only going by what I told, but we had, we were, I was told earlier on that expect 99 to 100 people there, and we had something like 137, 138 people there. Uh, it was, it was a resounding success, there were a lot of really great presentations there. We had people as from, as far away as Bear River coming down in order to take in this particular symposium. The only issue I see is that it's successful enough that it probably will require another venue, and I believe Communities in Bloom will probably look into that as we plan for next years, perhaps going to, well, somewhere else, be it the, the local high school or somewhere.
Good.
One more thing, can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Can I jump on, can I jump on the soapbox while the microphone is on? The next thing coming up that Communities in Bloom will be doing in conjunction with Waste Check is the Adopt a Block, and so, anybody should be watching Facebook and the Town of Yarmouth site in the next while, you'll have an opportunity to adopt a block in order to clean it up. And we're gonna be doing that from the 15th of April through until Earth Day, which is the 22nd, it's that week leading up to and including Earth Day, from Sunday to Sunday. So, be watching that, and we'd love to have a lot of volunteers to help clean the town up.
Awesome, great.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Good. Do you have another question?
Uh, maybe to the Chair of the Water Utility, there's just, talked to somebody on the street, and they're talking about the Lake George situation and, and some literature or some correspondence that was sent out by the Department of Environment, you have any information on that, Counselor?
I do, Deputy Mayor, so, I think I reported in our last council meeting that our consultant had finished their work and determined that there are no outstanding issues in relation to the processes that were invoked by the Department of Environment. I indicated that the Department of Environment was being requested to take certain action, and as of March 2nd, I have a copy of an inspection report and compliance update issued to the Town of Yarmouth by the Department of Environment. And I won't read the whole thing, but Nova Scotia Environment reviewed submissions by the Site Professional, that's our consultant, which included a summary letter dated February 7th, 2018, and this, and associated report entitled Groundwater and Surface Water Monitoring and Testing dated November 28th, 2017. Initially, there were very extensive examinations and tests done at the site in the February, March, April timeframe of 2016, and then it was determined that there's, after establishing baseline data, that the site should be evaluated for a significant length of time to determine whether there are any changes that could be observed, indicating that there were any contaminants that were on the site or leaving the site and posing any threat to anybody or anything in the area. And basically, they waited a year, did follow-up tests, and determined that there are no contaminants that pose a threat. So, continuing with the inspection report, the request and supporting documentation is deemed satisfactory to the Nova Scotia Environment, and therefore, the requirements of the contaminated site regulations as outlined in the inspection report issued to you on January 26th, 2017 no longer apply to the above-not-noted property. The file number for the property, oh, I, I have to back up, based on completion of long-term monitoring, which I spoke about before, of surface water and groundwater, formal notification Form 100, which is a form that we were required to send out to property owners adjacent to our lot, or in the area, in the vicinity of our lot, under the contaminated sites regulations, were requested to be redacted by the Site Professional for the above-noted property. And I understand Nova Scotia Environment has sent letters out to the property owners redacting, in other words, canceling those notices. As far as any information beyond what I've had to say tonight, we are in litigation. I did check, I had a meeting with the town's legal counsel a week and a half, two weeks ago, and there has not been a lot of activity on the file. There has been some activity, there's some inquiries that came out after we made the report on council, but that's well in hand, and I, if anyone decides to go ahead with the, with the lawsuit, which is their perfect right to do so, we're years from a resolution of that, my humble submission. Any information about this is talked about by the Department of Environment. The file number for the property in relation to the event is 33000-35-Yarmouth-3306262. Please be advised that access to information in this file is subject to provincial information access and privacy legislation and departmental policy. Requests for questions about disclosure of this information may be directed to the Information and Access Privacy Coordinator, NSE, at 902-424-2549, and I would suggest that if town receives any similar inquiries, they ought to direct the individuals making the request in accordance with this notice. And that's my report.
Yep. Now, I've got one for CIO.
I just, yeah, okay.
I've had a busy day on Saturday.
What, busy day on Saturday? Jeff, I talked to a couple of, one, one in person and one with a phone call about the, about the green bins. Can you just give us a little overview on, some residents got some notices, and give us a little overview on what the next step process is for that, please?
Sure, Your Worship, I received recently from Waste Check, an update of their model bylaw, which they developed for municipalities to consider adopting. That reminded me that our bylaw was approximately 10 years old since it was last revised, and so, it was time, it was time for an update. So, I began the process of working through the bylaw, and as I'm doing that, of course, I'm mindful that the provisions that we have in our bylaw, we wanna preserve, but we wanna update things like the way we sort materials compared to 10 years ago, and the way we, we collect as compared to 10 years ago. Anyway, one of the provisions in the bylaw is that for storage of solid waste on residential property, it's required to be stored in the side yard or in the backyard, not in the front yard. And so, I asked our bylaw enforcement officer, because he makes a, a routine of traveling the routes where garbage is collected in the town, and checking to see if people have pulled their bins back in from the curb after collection, 'cause we had some complaints about that. So, as he was doing that, I asked him to provide a, a notice or a reminder to folks who are storing their green bins or other solid waste at the roadside, or near the roadside, or in the front yard, that they are to, in accordance with the bylaw, store their, those materials in the side yard or the backyard. And so, he started delivering those letters. Now, what's great about that, certainly anybody getting a letter wasn't, weren't necessarily thrilled, and he's had a number of phone calls, but as I mentioned, this process started with a review of our bylaw with the mind of bringing forward a, an up-to-date bylaw to council. Within that process, which is about to begin, there will be a first reading for council for you to consider those provisions in the bylaw, both old and, and new provisions I'm proposing. There will be a public hearing for people to come forward and express their opinion on certain provisions of the proposed bylaw, including those existing provisions such as that ban on front yard storage of solid waste. And then council ultimately will make a, a, will, will approve some, I assume, will approve some amendments to the solid waste bylaw, and will, will soldier on. So, rather than waiting until we, we updated our bylaw, and you've had that discussion in the absence of any public comment, the letters went out ahead of time, which we're able to say, well, there will be a review process coming up, and if you are really concerned about this, and you think it is wrong-headed for these times, then, you know, you do have an opportunity to be heard, or, or for your thoughts to be considered in writing, however you, however you wish to present them. So, I did have, excuse me... So I did have, excuse me, one citizen contact me, and we had that discussion. He certainly wasn't pleased that he had to move his garbage storage unit to the backyard or side yard. However, it is the current provision in the bylaw. And so, you know, had we been more diligent in terms of enforcement over the last few years, we wouldn't have as many of those that have cropped up as, as we have currently today, but that is, that is our situation.
Thank you. Can you get that clip, please? Okay, additions, property issue.
Your worship, council was approached about the sale of a, a property. Property is thirteen Prince Street, PID nine-zero-two-nine-one-nine-zero-seven. Council, I'm recommending that council agree to sell the property as is for a price of ninety-six hundred dollars. So that is for your consideration.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Don Mills. Deputy?
Thank you, your worship. We were, myself and some other councillors and yourself, worship, we're at the Don Mills presentation by the Chamber of Commerce last night, and I think people get scared when Mr. Mills gets up and he starts at six-thirty or quarter to seven, he said, "I'm going to be an hour or more with the presentation." Usually when you have a guest speaker says he's more than fifteen or twenty minutes, you fall off the edge of your seat. But this time, you're on the edge of your seat, because he was, he was dynamic, he was topical, and he talked about issues that, that really affect people in the outlying areas of Nova Scotia. We're talking about, even though he considers Yarmouth an urban area, we still have outlying components. But I was just wondering, at the talk, you mentioned yourself in the talk several times, your worship, I just wondered what our next step is with, with the Mr. Mills or that hub strategy? Because I think that would have been, even though we were well represented, I would like to see other municipal councillors there, and Ward and Anthony was there, but I think that, that talk was more than just a Town of Yarmouth presentation, that was a regional presentation. I'm just wondering what we can do with yourself, the REN, I know they're going to have to have provincial and federal support, but some of the things he talked about, about immigration, things that we have to do about the disintegrating tax base, that's just the migration of people, just wondering what our next step is or what we can do.
Yeah, so, so you're absolutely right. Everybody was sitting on their, the edge of their seats for two hours, and what he did is he brought us the bleak outlook of the entire province if we don't do, do things differently. And Mr. Mills has been doing this for a number of years, doing this presentation and, and trying to, to forward this, these issues, you know, so that, so that we can come together and, and do things a little bit differently. I said earlier in the meeting that, you know, Nova Scotia's all for progress as long as nothing changes. And we see that, if I'm being honest, we see that at this table every, you know, every time we make decisions, you know? If, 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 yeah, if we made our decisions based on nothing changing, then, you know, what's going to happen? So, so I've been working with Mr. Mills and for probably three years on this as, as part of the urban mayors. So he, he said there are, there are nine economic hubs in the province, and I don't know them off by heart, I can in my head, but Yarmouth, Bridgewater, Kentville, Amherst, Danagansh, Truro, Port Hoxbury, and of course, CBRM, and Halifax. And within those nine towns and cities, sixty percent of the population of the province is represented. When you do what Mr. Mills is suggesting, and I agree a thousand percent, that because we are such a rural province, you can't, every community can't have everything. You can't have malls and banks and, and hospitals and, and everything else. You just have to be able to have them within a reasonable distance. And so the reasonable distance is between forty and forty-five minutes. Within that circle, if you take Yarmouth and every one of those nine, nine places in the province, and you draw a forty-minute circle around them, that radius, the population that is covered is ninety-five percent of the province. And so to councillor Hood's point earlier, you know, if, if the mayors of these nine cities, towns said, you know what, Plastics, for example, if we all said, you know what, province, we need to do this, there's probably some power in that, because we, we just represent as the economic centers ninety-five percent of the population.
Sixty percent of your actual population.
Oh, sixty percent, period, yes. That, that's the lowest number.
Sixty, sixty percent of our people are represented by us.
That's right.
But we represent an urban area.
Yes. No, that's good.
An urban area with ninety-five.
Yeah. So it's, it's huge, and, and, you know, it's, we had some discussion last night, I mean, he, he had some questions, and, and it's hard when you have to say, you know, everybody can't have everything. But, but for example, when he talks about, about hospitals and, and, deputy, I can't remember what the number was, but it was in the billions.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two hospitals, about how many billions of dollars? And the billions of dollars to keep, are to keep those doors open. They're not to hire doctors or anything.
Maybe the next ten years, the health budget will be ninety percent of what the government...
Exactly.
Yeah, I might have to use our lights, but ninety percent, the health budget could be ninety percent of the total budget.
Exactly.
For the province of Nova Scotia.
If, if we keep doing things the same way. So, so he said two, two huge issues. Number one is structural. Number two, I don't know which one's one and which one's two, I think they're both even, is the attitudinal. Okay? So everybody wants to have everything, and heaven help us, if we try to make changes, and I can say that sitting in this seat, every time you make a change, it's like pushing a rock uphill. You know, imagine being the, the province or the federal government trying to, to make the tough decisions to make your communities, your province, your country better, and, and it's always a fight. So we, something has to give. So, you know, under the Ivory Report, there were seven actions, including things like youth retention and immigration and, and the creating of the, the urban center. So basically, the idea is, is the hub strategy, which in all honesty, it already exists. You know, it was just a matter of saying, so, so let me frame it like this, because this is, this is the part that really makes it clear for me. Halifax in the province, Halifax is doing great. Their population's going up, their economics are excellent, they're booming, people are moving there, their buildings going up, there's a crane on every corner, it's like a standing joke. And it's because it's critical mass. And when, when, when you continue to build the urban center, everything around it falls in place. So what Don was saying last night is, you still choose whether you live on a lake or the ocean or whatever, but you just have to drive to get to your urban center. And it's just by virtue of, of the way Nova Scotia is. So imagine if we replicated what Halifax is doing in eight other places in the province. How strong would the province be? It would just be nine times stronger. So that's, that's the idea. So the challenge that he threw out to us in the end was that we sit down with, with the stakeholders and our partners, so all the municipal units in this region that would fall within that, that forty minutes, the, the REN, Chamber of Commerce, and the other entities, of course, that, you know, that would fall into that, and create a regional economic strategy with everybody at the table. And, and we need to sit down, and we need to say, and, and one of the things is immigration. And, you know, two sides to it, like you, you, you can't grow without immigration, and yet everybody says, you know, when immigration, when immigrants come, they take our job. No, they don't. They, the immigrants are the ones that create their own jobs. And so the ability to, to lessen the amount of public government jobs and create more private jobs, which create more jobs, is, is just off the charts when you have immigrants coming in. So we have to get out of that, there's the attitude, right? Get out of that mindset that they're taking our, our jo, they're not taking jobs, they're filling in jobs that nobody wants to do. Because, you know, sometimes it's easier to, to just take from the government than it is to, to do some of these jobs. So I will be, I'll be making those phone calls, setting up that meeting. I'm hoping to do it, you know, before the, the first week of April, just to get the people at the table to sit down, see which way we want to go, what do we want to tackle first, and, and something has to give. And, and I think we can drive it from here. I, I think Yarmouth and this entire region has always set the bar and not been afraid to, you know, take the first step in everything, so that's where we are right now. In a nutshell, that was a long story, but...
Yeah, and, and the presentation he gave, so he gave the, the overview with the, with the bleak and the grim picture, but the other thing is, at the end of this night, he also gave you the answers, right?
He did, yeah.
So I'm just wondering, your worship, if we have that meeting, pick one or two or three of the things that he discussed the other night, or last night, and concentrate on those, but actually, I wonder if there's an opportunity to bring Mr. Mills in again? Like coming from you, you're a wonderful spokesman, or coming from me, or coming from, coming from Leland, or coming from somebody else that's in the area, but coming from somebody else?
Yeah.
It, it might be a different look at the message, right? So, oh, there's Mayor Mu just going again, trying to better Yarmouth. Well, guess what? A better Yarmouth is better for the rest of the southwestern, for the whole region.
Absolutely.
But if you bring in a different voice, and he was, he was probably as good as a public speaker as I've seen, and I've seen him on several occasions at the Union of Nova Scotia Municipalities, and old councillor Hood was sitting right at the front of the room, looking at the, the numbers and the charts, right? So things from actually doing a mission, going to the Philippines, or going overseas to somewhere, so we're even going to Ontario with the Travel and Roadshow and bringing some people back, but there's work that the federal government, the provincial government has to do in regards to taking the limits off the immigration numbers.
Yeah, and that's a big part.
And that's a big part, yeah.
Tap into our locals.
I just wondered maybe if we could get Mr. Mills in for that. That's, I know he's a busy individual, and this is an important topic, right?
I think he might.
And the thing he talked about, he said, never vote for a politician that promises jobs. Because he, he showed the charts, right? And what you do is, you always say, was you set the table, right? You give them the recreational, the educational opportunities for business to come in and set up, so, and the right taxation structures.
So isn't that exactly, let's be honest, that's exactly what Yarmouth has been doing for the past few years. We're setting the table. We're doing the facade program, and, and we're, we're doing, we're doing all the bumpouts even. And again, you know...
The laddering, the laddering of the taxation structure in the central business district, yeah.
So we're doing everything we can to set the table so that the businesses will decide to land.
Even the small things like tonight with the, some of the green projects we've done over the last few years with the, with the LED lights that are going to save a million dollars over the next twenty years, the, the solar panel, the windmills with the, our other municipal partners, we're doing incremental changes, but I'm just, hopefully, if you say it long enough, Mr. Mills' message is going to catch you on.
Yeah.
And councillor McLeod has alluded to it quite a few times about more alignment with our municipal units or amalgamation, but, you know, that's, that's going to happen over, I think, the next several years, but...
It's not a competition.
No.
We all just have to do what we do, what we do best, right? So wasn't it the, the municipality, a thousand kilometers of ocean and lake frontage?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Like the billboards that could go up across Canada and the big centers where you get so much here for so little.
This could be yours, yeah.
Man, the potential's off the charts, but we can't, we have to do it together, right? Councillor Hood?
I wanted to fill in some of the blanks, so who is Don Mills? Well, Don Mills has been operating corporate research associates in Halifax for more than twenty-five years. He's the preeminent pollster and numbers guru for the Atlantic Canada. And he's had a mission of his own. This is, his presentation last night was not something he was paid to do, it's something he's doing because he believes in our province, and he believes in how we might actually turn the numbers around in our province. So he talked about numbers, so fill in some of the blanks. Twenty-five percent of Nova Scotians work for the government. I think that's scandalous.
It is.
I really do. Now, believe it or not, though, nationally, twenty percent of the people work for government. And I, I'm, I'm afraid that the young people coming out of school all want to work for the government. He gave a number, eight percent of the people want to go to work in the private center coming out of the schools.
Less than that.
Or six percent or something, which is...
Three percent.
And when I think about it, I've got two granddaughters, God, love them, but they're both now work in university, and they're on paths that will take them to work for the government. So it's significant, it's important, they're, but when you compare us to other parts of the country, it's over the top, and it's a heavy burden on the province. We've had ten years with no realistic growth in our province, ten lost years, and we're going to have ten more if we're not careful. He mentioned a politician, don't believe a politician going to get you jobs. Well, he mentioned Premier Gallant promised when he ran in the last election over New Brunswick, ten thousand new jobs, guess what? He's fifteen thousand down.
Yeah.
According to Mr. Mills.
Exactly.
He had some very positive words about our ferry. I wanted to point that out, because he does numbers, and, and the, the economic impacts that it has. And he said, just keep with it, because soon, nobody will be talking about it negatively, they'll be talking about it positively. He reassured us on that point. I talked to him after the conference last night, said, you know, one of the ways to get where you think we should go to would be to move the, people in Nova Scotia, most of them, don't understand that if you live in the County of Yarmouth, the province is paying for your policing. And they don't understand that the province is paying for your roads. There's many other items that are similar to that, but these are the big, big hits. And if you moved, if the province moved the cost of policing over to the municipal governments and forced them to tax it, those people would start to pay a fair share, their fair share of the taxation. They're not now. Rural people outside these towns are not paying their fair share for the services they are receiving. And they're demanding that government extend internet, high-speed internet into the remotest places, and it's very, very expensive. Towns, we're getting screwed, to put it blunt. So if you could move, over a ten-year period, the cost of roads and policing over to municipal, and they would have to tax their citizens to pay for those things, that would help those citizens make decisions to locate in the urban cores that are talked about here. And how do we do it? I'll tell you how we do it. You build an arts center in downtown Yarmouth, and you do what we're doing. You turn over every leaf you can to ensure we don't increase the size of the donut hole in our downtown core, and find a way to have the wide, redeveloped in the downtown core. That's what you do, and that's what we're trying to do. And we follow up on these things and try, I, I would just think, I thought overnight, if, if the province could be convinced that, notwithstanding the political difficulty of amalgamations, go away from that, but give status to those nine regional areas so that they could make decisions on certain areas of governance that are within our areas, that when they have those sixty percent, all right, that they can make it on behalf of the whole darned area. That's what, that's what it would take. As long as those regional centers could make those decisions, provided they had the mandate, they could make them on behalf of the people, and they could holler all they want over here. So when we want to do regulations to protect the watershed, we don't have to have a six-year fight with the municipality over it, with them stabbing a knife in our back every damn time we turn around. That kind of thing could be made by the County of Yarmouth. That kind of thing. And if the province would enact legislation that would give us the teeth to be able to do that, from each one of these nine urban cores, we'd take a long step toward getting to where we need to be. We need five to seven thousand immigrants coming into our province, and we got to find a way to wrap around, our arms around them and bring them in. Get rid of the federal government caps that hold us back and all the rest. Get rid of the federal government caps that hold us back and all the rest. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. How do you really feel?
I feel good when I'm given to this.
Oh, gosh, help us. Okay, so where are we? Number 11C, lease offer. Go ahead.
Your worship, we've been working with Canadian Border Services and Public Works Canada for quite a while to establish a lease agreement on the ferry terminal for the non-operating season. Subject to legal review of the lease offer, I would like your agreement to proceed to make the offer to Government of Canada based on the lease that's been negotiated, again, subject to legal review.
I didn't do a legal review, but I did have a quick chance to look it over. I'll make the motion to be accepted, the CAO's recommendation.
I'll second that motion. Okay. Discussion?
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Approval of invoices, please.
So.
Discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Date of next meeting?
Oh, sorry, I didn't real.
Just one thing I wanted to deal with. I think councillor Mooney spoke with councillor Barry about, he's out of town, I assume, with his daughter, and I think it would be appropriate for a motion to be passed to approve his absence from the meeting.
Do I make a motion to exclude councillor Barry from this meeting?
And I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Yes.
Your worship, maybe.
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that we send our heartfelt congratulations on a excellent university career. Ally Berry has done Yarmouth proud, she's in Regina right now, playing in the, Jeff, what's the new term now? I said, CI, I called it the CIAUs.
That's what I do, too.
CIS, they're the number three ranked team in the country, and she's the second-best player on the team, and I think the first best is from, I think she's either from Boston or New York. So she was the star, if you read the Chronicle Herald last Monday, Ally was the star, 25 points, 14 rebounds, she had a double-double in the first quarter. And then she did the old Don Berry trick, she got into foul trouble. So I know there's a contingent from Yarmouth and Regina, and hopefully, she can come home with a championship to match it up with what Kenny Fells and Steve Johnson did a number of years ago, also playing for your alma mater, your worship.
Stand up and cheer up.
So I make a motion, we send congratulations to Ally Berry on an excellent season, and being a great representative for the town of Yarmouth.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. CAO's alma mater, too.
I move that, yes. You're an act man, too, yes.
Good stuff, okay? So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn then.
So.
Do we have anything on camera? No, we're good.